...added on November 18th, 2021 to the Hillsborough Beacon and the Courier News. Ms. Rodriguez, may we have a roll call, please?
Sure. Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Ms. Strickden? Mr. Marini?
Here.
Ms. Maroon?
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Statz?
Here.
Mr. Heo?
Here.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. May I now take a motion to move into executive session, and I'll read the notice. Whereas the Open Public Meetings Act, Chapter 231 of the laws of 1975, provides that a public body may exclude the public from that portion of the meeting of which the public body discusses certain matters for which confidentiality is required as permitted in Section 7B of the Act, resolved by the Board of Education of the Township of Hillsborough and the County of Somerset and State of New Jersey as follows: The matters to be discussed are attorney-client privileges, privileged matters, and negotiations with the Hillsborough Education Association. The matters discussed in executive session shall be disclosed to the public when the need for confidentiality no longer exists. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Second?
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. All in favor?
Aye.
We are now in executive session. We expect to be back here at 7:30. Thank you. Executive Session, Ms. Rodriguez, if we could have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gillette?
Here.
Mr. Kid? Mr. Marini?
Present.
Ms. Maroon?
Here.
Ms. Nurse?
Here.
Mr. Oliver?
Here.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Here.
Ms. Statz?
Here.
Mr. Heo? Here.
We have a floor.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. May we now all please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
(Inaudible).
I'd like to acknowledge the correspondence as listed as received, and then move into committee reports. If Mr. Gillette could give the operations minutes?
All right. I wasn't set up yet, but that was pretty quick, right, the committee reports? Okay. So, Operations Committee met on November 9th. We started off with a referendum update on the referendum projects that have been occurring over the last two years from Mr. DeLuca. He told us that things were moving along, parking lot in Hillsborough, Medjus School was delayed a little bit with the drainage piping, but that's going to be completed soon. Sixty percent of the roof work is complete at HES, and they continue to work on the pumps for the boilers. This was a couple weeks ago, so a lot of this has probably been completed by now. The main outstanding project is the building maintenance system, and they're still working on that. Next, we had the review of the policies, which you'll see on your agenda for tonight, some of them, I think, right? Yeah, the ones reviewed? Let's see. We had an update on a negotiations matter. We had the update on the audit. We have a new auditor this year for the first time. They started a little bit later. That auditor would usually start. We're already in November. We don't have the completed audit yet, or maybe it's just coming within the last week. I don't know. But when that's finished, we'll have that. We talked about the, Dr. Antunes talked about the last board meeting, the vaccination clinic at the high school. And I think that was it. It was actually a pretty brief and concise meeting. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Gillette. Mr. Oliver, if you would give the Human Resources Committee minutes?
Human Resources Committee met on November 9th. We discussed the extension of interim supervisor. We talked about the webmaster stipend, losing the webmaster, she's retiring, and talked about filling that position with some interim work, kind of doing a little twofold and doing something for technology. We reviewed proposal for some clubs, which we're recommending for approval, one requiring a little bit more information. We had a couple of personnel matters to discuss, and we talked about a little bit of a pandemic that's probably being experienced through many school districts about losing good teachers to either other districts or retiring. So, we talked about some ideas, how we can move forward and understand how and why we're losing good teachers, and discuss some staff surveys. So, we're going to share some additional ideas, more to be determined as we move forward into the new year.
Thank you, Mr. Oliver. As I said before, if the people who are not wearing their masks, if you could please wear your mask or leave the premises and then get a mask to put on, we'd appreciate that very much. Thank you. Ms. Statz with the Alliance Report.
First of all, just to want to make sure everybody is aware that the Municipal Alliance addresses substance abuse awareness and education. The Municipal Alliance met on November 12th. We discussed Chris Heron Foundation grant that would give us access to his documentary the first day, and there was a lot of flexibility with that. And we also were told that the Pride Survey was given in the district and that had questions related to drug and alcohol use, COVID, mental health, and lifestyle. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Statz. Next on the agenda, if I could have a motion and a second to approve the November 8th, 2021 executive minutes?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marini.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next, have a motion to approve the public session minutes from November 8th, 2021.
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Any discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Any abstentions? Thank you. Next, we have comments from the board and public on the action agenda only, so I will open it up to the board first if there are any comments on tonight's action agenda. Ms. Nurse? No, okay. So then I will open it up to the public for comments on the action agenda only, and I will read the preface. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do so if they are attending in person. During the first public comment period, members of the public may comment on items that are listed on tonight's agenda before the board votes. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 167. Before you state your comment, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute limit on public comments. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. If you have a comment on the action agenda, the mic is open. There is a podium on the side where you can put your name before you come up to the podium.
Just in reference to the action agenda, specifically the retirements and resignations, I appreciated the point that Mr. Oliver brought up as to what was being discussed in the HR Committee, but as I spoke to at the last board meeting, we're in now in a position where we're chronically losing staff at every meeting, specifically from certain departments, and we're seeing that happen yet again at this board meeting. And I realize that there's a lot of stuff that can be done, but even just on a simple search, I went back to 2019 and looked at the number of resignations from the board meetings in the month of November, and we have now more than tripled that in this month. And that's a trend that we can't sustain if we're going to appropriately stuff these classrooms and educate these kids. So, I strongly encourage the board to take a look at what's going on, get to the bottom of this, and figure out why we're hemorrhaging good people who otherwise wouldn't be leaving. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comments? Seeing none, I will close public comments and then turn it over to the superintendent for the action agenda.
Thank you, Mr. Heo. Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the education agenda as follows, 9.1 to 9.3: Motion to approve professional travel-related expenses; Motion to approve staff for the ESAR ELA Learning Acceleration Program; and Motion to affirm the harassment, intimidation, and bullying for the attached cases.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. Ms. Nurse?
Yes. Can you please separate out 9.2?
Sure. So, may I have a motion and a second for 9.1 and 9.3?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer. Thank you, Ms. Maroon. All in favor?
Aye.
Oh, sorry. I'm sorry.
You have to do a roll call.
Sorry.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Statz?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passed.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez. May I now have a motion and a second for 9.2?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Pulsifer.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Marini. Is there any discussion?
I just, I mentioned this before, but my vote today is based on the fact that I wish that I had seen a brief presentation about what those funds were going to and what programs were going to be established with them.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Any other comments? Seeing none, if we could have a roll call, Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Epstein.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Statz?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
The Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the human resources agenda as follows, 10.1 to 10.15: Motion to approve retirements and resignations as listed. And I'd like to thank Mr. Burma, Lori Honigman, and Terry Yesman for their service to the students of Hillsborough. Motion to approve revised appointments; Motion to approve revised mentor assignments as listed; Motion to approve revised sixth-period coverage and revised science lab coverage; Motion to approve revised leave replacement assignments; Also to rescind a mentor contract; Motion to approve a transfer and change in assignment and a contract change as listed; Motion to approve appointments as outlined; Motion to approve a student-teacher as well as a mentor; Motion to approve seventh-period coverage and pre-approved extra coverage; and Motion to approve extra coverage.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Maroon. Any discussion? Ms. Rodriguez, if we could have a roll call, please?
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Statz?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Superintendent recommends that the Board of Education approve the operation agenda as follows, 11.1 to 11.8: Motion to approve the monthly financial statement as well as the monthly bills; Motion to approve the non-public expenditure resolution; and Motion to approve out-of-district placements for 11.4, 11.5, and 11.6; Motion to approve policies and regulations for first reading as listed; and Motion to approve policy and bylaws for second reading as listed.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. May I have a motion and a second?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Marini.
Second.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Is there any discussion? If we could have a roll call, please, Ms. Rodriguez.
Mr. Gillette?
Yes.
Mr. Marini?
Yes.
Ms. Maroon?
Yes.
Ms. Nurse?
Yes.
Mr. Oliver?
Yes.
Mr. Pulsifer?
Yes.
Ms. Statz?
Yes.
Mr. Heo?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Thank you. And I'll turn it back over to the Superintendent for the Superintendent's report.
Thank you, Ms. Heo. Welcome to tonight's board meeting. I'm sure everyone joins me in looking forward to a restful, peaceful Thanksgiving and upcoming long weekend. As a reminder, in addition to half-days for conferences this week, all staff and students have a half-day on Wednesday, November 24th. Without sounding too repetitive, I would again like to remind parents and students of quarantine requirements if families plan to travel for Thanksgiving. Travel includes anywhere outside of New Jersey, Pennsylvania, New York, and Delaware. Quarantine is seven to 10 days. If a student tests negative three to five days after travel, they are required to quarantine for seven days. If a student does not get tested, they are required to quarantine for 10 days. If a student tests positive, they must stay home for 10 days after the positive test. The district continues to follow the CDC guidelines for travel. Please cooperate with these guidelines. Although we all look forward to the loosening and relaxing of restrictions, we must remain vigilant. Keeping our schools open full days, five days a week, and the health and safety of our students and staff must remain our first priority. Congratulations to the Hillsborough High School Theater for their outstanding production of puffs for seven increasingly eventful years of magic and magic this past weekend. Kudos to the cast, crew, and student leaders for their hard work, and to the director, artists, carpenters, photographers, lighting tech, and seamstress who made it possible. Our fall athletic wrap-up, congratulations to all of our fall athletes as their season comes to an end. It's exciting to share that the girls' cross-country team is Skyland Conference Delaware Division championship champions, and the field hockey team is Skyland Conference Delaware Division co-champions. The football team is currently 12-0. They are big Central Conference champions, NJSIAA Central Five sectional champions, and will be playing for an NJSIAA Regional Championship on December 4th versus Kingsway at Rutgers University at 1:00. As a reminder to parents, please complete the COVID health affirmation statement from the Genesis Parent Portal before next Tuesday, November 30th, to ensure timely access to student report cards that will be posted on November 30th. As you may recall, there was some conversation last meeting about the removal of a piece of student artwork from a display case in the middle school. Those display cases typically rotate, and they are transitioning to educational materials, including some honoring National Native American Heritage Month. There was some confusion initially as to whether or not the materials were in fact student artwork, which was not clear at the time the poster was removed. Nonetheless, I want to emphasize that the district is committed to respecting students' rights of free speech and expression within the school setting, as our courts have outlined, and is also committed to providing an educational program that is inclusive and is free of harassment and discrimination of any kind. I continue to receive feedback on a myriad of decisions made surrounding any number of topics or events. Some of the feedback is filled with anger and frustration, while others filled with gratitude and thanks. The dichotomy of this feedback in each of the situations is predictable based upon the differing opinions within the community over the past 20 months or so. At the risk of sounding like a broken record, I again request that parents, students, and staff remember that we knew as we opened schools in September that the priority was to keep schools open. With this in mind, it was also shared that not all activities would be able to resume their typical manner. I do understand the gravity of the decisions. I do understand the disappointment and fear. I do understand that we all want what we want. I also understand that this is just not possible right now if we're going to keep the priority as keeping schools open. While there are some who believe that one event or activity is favored over another, this is simply not the case. Creating a workaround is an answer. However, I believe it is not the best answer and often creates confusion, and more importantly creates a level of risk unnecessary at this time. Collaboration with the local health officials and our school physician continues on an ongoing basis. We continue to see the increase of COVID-19 cases, especially after extended days off from school or following holidays. This trend is expected to continue throughout the upcoming holiday season. I shared this at the last board meeting, and I will do so again. We carry the weight of every decision we make each and every day for the 1,400 staff members and 7,300 students. We know that these decisions do not make everyone happy, and I understand that while it may seem inconsistent, every situation is truly looked at individually. What has also been consistent is the promise to reevaluate and adjust decisions as time continues to move ahead. Discussions I have had with the New Jersey Department of Health, the local department of health, and the district physician indicate that their predictions for an increase in the number of COVID patients will continue throughout the holiday season before stabilizing during the winter. We absolutely must remain vigilant and allow the process to unfold based upon the situation at the moment of decision-making. High-risk behaviors of several increase the risk of potential exposure to many. I've said this many times over the course of the last several months, so the fact that I am not approving overnight field trips at this time ought not come as a surprise. However, it seems that's important for me to reiterate once again that overnight field trips are not being approved at this time. I believe it to be irresponsible to allow overnight trips for a team or group of students which may raise the risk of potential exposure to others. Moreover, our district physician is not advocating for overnight events at this time until minimally after the holiday season. It comes as no surprise that travel and overnight hotel exposure is high risk. Given the rising rates, inability to not share transportation and hotels, as well as other variables, the decision to not engage in overnight events at this time remains a reasonable one. Finally, on behalf of the board, we are sending wishes for good health, happiness, and memorable moments with family during this Thanksgiving. Please take a moment to relax and refresh as this year's holiday season begins. Thank you, Ms. Heo.
Thank you, Dr. Antunes. And I also wanted to make a statement just to address the incident, the last board meeting. I wanted to share that board members abide by the code of ethics, and no individual board member has any authority to direct any staff member to act. It's okay for a board member to express a concern, and at no point did a board member give a directive to censor a display at the middle school. Thank you. And so, next, what I would like to do is open it up to the board for any comments before I open up to the public, and then the board will have another chance after the close of public comments to make any discussion. So, okay, so then, seeing none from the board at this time, then I will go to public comments. As a reminder to the public, this is the board meeting where the board conducts its business in public, as you saw just earlier. As you come to the podium, please put your name before you come to, there's a sheet of paper to write your name down prior to coming to the podium, and there are many people who wish to speak tonight, so I please ask you to adhere to the three-minute limit so that as many people as possible can speak tonight. We have a timer. Ms. Rodriguez has a timer next to me. You will hear the beep, and I will ask that you please wrap within three minutes, and if not, then I will ask you to stop at the three-minute mark. So, again, should I read it again? Okay, so I'm going to read the comments again so you're familiar. We very much welcome input from the public. During board meetings, there will be two 30-minute periods of time that the meeting will be open for public comment, where members of the public are invited to comment, which they may do so if they are attending in person. During the second public comment period, members of the public may comment on any school or school district issue that a member of the public feels may be of concern to the residents of the school district as per Bylaw 167. Before you state your comments, you will be asked to provide your name and address. There is a three-minute time limit on public comments. Please understand that our public forums are not structured as question-and-answer sessions, but rather are offered as opportunities to share your thoughts with the board. In instances where the board believes that there is a misunderstanding or inaccuracy, the board president or superintendent will address the comments. There may be times when a member of the public makes a comment or asks a question about personnel or hiring decisions. Kindly note that the Open Public Meetings Act and the privacy rights of public employees encompass therein do not permit the board to discuss personnel issues in public session. So with that, we welcome the first speaker.
Good evening, members of the Board of Education. My name is Teresa Alex, and I reside on 120 St. Metzger. I'm a freshman at Hillsborough High School, but the reason I am here tonight is to expose my concern on the censorship of the Black Lives Matter poster in the middle school. Now, you might not have known this, but I myself, along with my friend Divya Thakkar, worked on creating that poster, and when you took down this poster, you not only disregarded an issue that impacts thousands across our country, but you invalidated our personal opinions that were expressed using that poster. Now, I'd like to clarify that when I created this poster, it was never with the intention to offend or attack the police. I respect the police, and I understand that their job is certainly not a feasible one, but the fact that you automatically resonated, me being Black Lives Matter to me being completely against the police, just shows your ignorance that you hold on this topic. If you all truly want an explanation as to what I wrote, I had a Black Lives Matter fist with the names of those who are perish due to police brutality surrounding it. Above the fist and names, we wrote, "This needs to end," and below the names, it was written, "Stop police brutality." Now, please keep in mind that I wrote "stop police brutality" and not "stop the police." To be honest, there is no two-sided argument to police brutality, because there is no other side to the value of human life being violated by someone in power. I define police brutality as an excessive and illegal use of force by law enforcement from which a victim is stripped of their dignity and self-preservation. I do not believe you can fight another side to that. When you censored this poster, you censored my opinion, which I made myself. Nobody in my life, neither my teachers or parents, ever forced me to have the opinions that I have today, and for that, I will always be grateful. I made a decision for myself to be Black Lives Matter, but I never made a decision to be against the law enforcement. Rather, this was an opinion that you tried to decide for me based on your assumptions over our intentions. I want you to think about it like this: Each and every system, even if the smartest people are a part of it, could never be completely perfect, whether it be our family systems, our school systems, and our policing systems. There are flaws in everything, and no one is above or higher than, to which we cannot judge them. Everyone is subject to judgment, but it is only through judgment that we can spark change and innovation. These are the thoughts that raced through my head as I hung my poster high proudly in our middle school hallways, and it is these very thoughts now that bring me here tonight to ask you to reconsider your decision. I will leave you with this last thought from Robin Sharma. A person who lacks self-expression is a person without personal freedom. I also have a small public...
Thank you. If you could just wrap up your thoughts, please?
Uh-huh. I also have a small public comment from Divya Thakkar, who could not be here tonight, but one of her opinions stated. She says, "I have such dismay for the removal of our creation. This was a simple attempt from inspiring students of HMS Cares to showcase the brutal and very real reality of police brutality. As John Oliver mentioned, there is a young gentleman sitting, putting his life on the line for the safety of others. However, let this be a point: He is here to protect, not to murder. The person that was created by myself and Teresa in no way portrayed that the sole job of the police is to kill. The purpose..."
Excuse me, I'm sorry. Are you reading somebody else's?
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm sorry. We have a large group of people, and I really do appreciate that you've come to speak to us tonight, but we do need to adhere to the three minutes.
Okay, I'm sorry.
Thank you very much for your comments.[1643.53][1643.53](Applause)
Aleah Merchant, 20 Miller Drive.
Could you speak a little louder?
Aleah Merchant, 20 Miller Drive. Good evening, Board of Education members. My name is Aleah, and I'm a freshman at Hillsborough High School. You may remember me from HMS Cares when two of my peers and I spoke last year about microaggressions and how they should be included in the curriculum. I would like to start my speech off with a quote from psychotherapist Amy Morin. Choosing to avoid uncomfortable feelings often offers immediate short-term relief, but avoidance can lead to long-term consequences. I have come here today to talk about the recent removal of a Black Lives Matter poster in Hillsborough Middle School from HMS Cares hallway of racial healing. When I learned about the situation and why it was removed, my first thought was, how could anyone feel uncomfortable with something as simple as a poster placed by a few 13 to 14-years-olds? But as I sat down to talk about it with my peers, former teachers, and members of the community, I was able to sort my thoughts into words. This brings me to my main point, this feeling of discomfort that many parents and students felt looking at the poster as it's extremely important. Change doesn't come easily and comfortably. Change doesn't come easily and comfortably. Despite how, despite how much certain people might hate it, getting uncomfortable is the first step to changing the community. So I'm proud to say that the poster made by two of my peers worked. I'm proud that when people looked at that poster, they were forced to think about police brutality and the harm it brings to communities. In order to change the community, people need to think about subjects that make them uncomfortable. This feeling will help spark the ideas and change this community desperately needs. This is why I hope you will rethink your decisions about the removal of the poster. Some of us speaking tonight are only in high school. We have seen the firsthand effects of racism in our community. I have been a victim to it myself on multiple occasions. The POC community of Hillsborough wants to see a difference in our town. We look to adults in our community to help make that change. I look to you, members of the community with a large amount of power, to start this feeling of discomfort and use that feeling to help spark change, that, a change for the future generations of POC students. Thank you, and have a good night.
Thank you very much. Ms. Howard, before you begin, if we could just have the people who are not exactly in my line of sight, who are not wearing a mask, if you could please put your mask on as I requested earlier. If, sir, the gentleman behind the person's, like your, thank you. If you could please put your mask on, we would really appreciate that, per the Governor's Executive Order for Public School Buildings. All right, thank you. Go ahead, thank you.
Okay. All right, good evening. My name is Joyce Eldridge Howard, 75 Weber Avenue. I'm here tonight in response to my viewing of the most recent Hillsborough Board of Education meeting, and I would like to first commend Dr. Trabowski for his clear, concise clarification of the display of one of the elements of social justice and injustice from slavery to the present. I would also like to commend the librarians' input and the conscientious efforts of the students involved in the HMS Cares Club. Most of us know that the Board of Education develops policies that govern school operations in compliance with state and federal laws and regulations. We all know that school boards employ a superintendent to lead and manage the school district and to serve as the chief executive officer of the school system. I believe that Dr. Antunes is doing a fine job during this very difficult times. Superintendents are also responsible for the management of the schools and the administration of all school board policies and are directly accountable to the school board. However, the implementation of curriculum in the schools is a direct responsibility of the principals and teachers while in compliance with the New Jersey State Department of Education. Not only should we all be assured that the school environment is safe, principals, teachers, librarians, and counselors must all continue to have high expectations for all students. I know this is being addressed due to Hills, uh, Hillsborough student outcomes published in the local newspapers during the past year and previous years and during my short tenure as a member of the board. However, the Declaration of Independence states, "We hold these truths that all men are created equal." That statement has not always held water, beginning with slavery to the present day. As demonstrated given the times that we live in, I believe that Hillsborough schools are on the right track. I view the reaction to the timeline as being a good thing, because it has opened up dialogue among many in our community. What has happened in our country is beginning to trickle down to some local localities, and we would prefer not to be a part of that club. What has occurred has also provided all of us with an awareness that we should get involved and stay alert. All I ask is that we all continue to provide positive truths and examples for our students and our community so that we can make a productive difference for the present generation and generations to come. I, I would like to thank the principals, the teachers, the librarians, and counselors for all of their efforts. As concerned adults, we must all care, and I repeat, care, in order to make an encouraging impact for our future generations. To me, the C for care, credible, A, accurate, R, respectful, and E, encouraging. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Rodriguez Howard.
Good evening, Dr. Antunes and members of the Board of Education. My name is Tuyen Lee, and I have lived at 4 Ivy Lane in Hillsborough for 33 years and served on the Board of Education from 2010 to 2013. While serving on the Board of Ed, I learned that we are most effective when we consider the needs of the students first, and not just one segment of the student population, but the school community as a whole. It sounds simple, but you actually have to be conscientious about it. I'd like to talk about the Black Lives Matter poster that was included in the Hallway of Healing and discussed at the last board meeting within the context of listening to all perspectives. When the focus is on students, we understand why there is a need to have the Hillsborough Middle School Hallway of Healing. It tackled the issue of racism, celebrated Pride Month, and meant a lot to the students who created it. It allowed students to express their evolving understanding and start a conversation about these issues. Tonight, you have heard the students' dismay and concerns about how their poster was misrepresented as anti-police when their intention was far from it that. When a poster that was part of a hallway of healing causes a reaction other than healing to other students and members of the community, it gives us, as a community, the chance to explore why. It allows each of us to try to understand another person's viewpoint. So let's make this an opportunity to have a much-needed conversation in our town. I encourage Hillsborough residents to lead the country by example and have difficult but necessary conversations for the sake of our students. I encourage Dr. Antunes to reestablish the Community Partnership Network, originally established under Dr. Schiff. Dr. Antunes was, in fact, instrumental in orchestrating the series of meetings, and I would be happy to help in whatever way I can. During these meetings, we had breakout sessions for timely issues. As a potential breakout session, um, we could, I invite our community to explore why a Black Lives Matter poster might be interpreted as anti-police to some, when it is a simple truth for others. Our common ground is our wish for all of our students to have a safe school environment that allows them to have an order to thrive and become the best that they can be. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, Board, and thank you for the opportunity to speak. My name is Janine Basin. I live at 211 Valley Road. I stand here tonight as a taxpayer and a mom in support of Board Member John Oliver. The newspaper article did not do this administration any favors. The thought that anyone would be offended by Mr. Oliver's statement asking for a counterpoint is simply astounding. I am all for the freedom of speech or expression, but there needs to be a point and counterpoint for each poster displayed. This way, they all can have an opportunity for a sense of pride, even as this district is continuing to push an agenda for racism, division, and hate. I am a little confused as to why a high school student's work of art was on display in the middle school in the first place. What is even worse is that you allowed the union, a coalition led by a member who ran for the board, and an administrator from this district have a newspaper report on it. This act may very well appear to members of our community as using leverage or a position of power to get a point across, and that is very concerning. Mr. Oliver was correct in stating that if you have a point, a counterpoint must be made. There are children in this district that have parents who are in law enforcement, and I'm sure they are not happy with that one-sided opinion. I have a cousin who is currently a sheriff in Brooklyn, New York, and another cousin who's a retired New Jersey police sergeant. So I am personally offended that a counterpoint presentation was not entertained. I hear firsthand stories what my cousins have to deal with. I am embarrassed to sit around my table this Thanksgiving with my family and admit that this school district, our school district, is only presenting one side of the story. Teaching and encouraging that one side deserves a spotlight and not the other is hypocritical at best, and not providing your students, my children, the opportunity to think for themselves and form their own opinions, and to show their pride for those officers and sheriffs and sergeants who do good and wonderful things for our community. I previously spoke in front of you about CRT in our schools. I am saddened and disappointed that the subject is constantly skirted around. By changing the name of your divisive and racist program to SEL, Social and Emotional Learning, does not change the content of the materials being presented. Social and emotional learning is something that should happen at home. Schools should be teaching the subjects needed for education. Our community, our children, my children, me, I do not see color. I wish all of our educators, administrators, and board members did not as well. I hope other parents and community members who feel the same way find the strength and courage to speak their hearts and not be afraid of backlash either upon themselves or their children from the board, educators, or administrators that have different opinions. Thank you for your time, and thank you for serving us, Mr. Officer.
Thank, thank you, Ms. Basin. Before you begin, ma'am, if you could just put your mask up over your nose? We appreciate that. Thank you.
Sorry. Hi, my name is Megan Mazur. I'm 613 Boozer Lane, and yes, that is a real street in Hillsborough. I want to say first that I'm a parent of two boys in this district, and having been a child, a parent of a child with special needs, um, in this past, in this district the past 11 years has been an amazing pleasure. Your teachers and staff and nurses and special education are beyond the most amazing people you will ever meet and go above and beyond each day for these children. I can't even express my gratitude to these teachers, and I'm just impressed every day with them. And as well as my other son, who is in regular ed, each of his teachers have been amazing. Now, that being said, at the last meeting, I was extremely disappointed in the speech given by Mr. Trabowski. I agree with our school's academic integrity is at risk because of individuals like himself that use our child, our children's artwork as a pawn to promote his own version of social justice in our schools. We have seen over the past year the terror and destruction that this organization promotes. As administrator of the school, he should have well-known that parents have a right to express their concern over showing anything regarding Black Lives Matter, as they are considered by many to be a terrorist group. If you want to promote social inequalities in our country, go for it. There are plenty to choose from. But you must also represent, represent the other side by showing the courage, strength that our police have every day. They put all their lives on the line for us and at our, the first ones we call when we are at our weakest moment in our lives and sometimes the scariest. As a parent of a child with special needs, whose comprehension, comprehension isn't that of a neurotypical child, my son would take that sign as a literal fact, that his life means nothing because he is a white child. It is important for us to believe and show our children that their color of their skin doesn't matter. It is important what their merit is and how hard they work and who they are as people. It is not the school's job to show our kids what is moral that is ours as parents morally correct. Mr. Trabowski needs to be reminded as an administrator, he needs to stand neutral on such political issues. Our children are the children of hard-working Americans, not the children of rioting, destroying racists like Black Lives Matter. This kind of propaganda only pushes racism and hatred in our community and divides us as a group of adults further away from each other, rather than pulling us together. I don't want to silence our children ever. Instead, I would much rather teach them history, the good, the bad, the ugly, the gritty, everything. Learn from that, see how others have worked together and reacted to things, and move on from it, and continue to move forward rather than constantly pulling negativity back into our lives. Learn from each other, grow. With that, I will end by saying that Black Lives Matter has no place in our schools, and Mr. Trabowski may want to think about why parents felt more comfortable speaking with Mr. Oliver over this issue rather than himself. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments.
My name is Chris Geraldi, 940 River Road, lifetime resident of Hillsborough. Professionally, I'm a police officer, but tonight I'm here as a resident and concerned parent in the district. Recently, as we know, there's been a lot of discussions surrounding a controversial display located within Hillsborough Middle School. Now, I know that my opinions on many things tonight may not be popular with everyone, especially some in this room and in this district, but I know that there are just as many people that my opinions will resonate with, many of which have remained quiet in fear of being singled out, looked at, or even treated differently. While personally, I believe there is a place in every school curriculum for the history and current affairs regarding things like racism, equality, police brutality, and even the Black Lives Matter movement, I do not believe there is a place in our schools to advertise things like BLM posters. A poster, oh, sorry. Black Lives Matter is a movement which currently has its founder in New York City vowing that there will be riots, fire, and bloodshed, in his own words, if Mayor-elect, who's also African-American, Eric Adams, brings back plainclothed anti-crime units, units that were previously disbanded under the Defund the Police movement, which ultimately led to the surge in violent crimes that they are experiencing there today. You heard that right. We have posters within our district supporting a movement that is inciting violence at the thought of reducing crime. That being said, I want to be clear that I don't discredit or downplay any of the positive change BLM has created. For those who are aware, May of every year is known as Law Enforcement Appreciation Month. Just a few years ago, a Hillsborough High School employee was kind enough to collect pictures of law enforcement officers from within our community, including family members of school staff. She made a bulletin board to celebrate Law Enforcement Appreciation Month, where she included the, quote, "Blue Lives Matter." Her heartfelt, meaningful gesture lasted only a few hours before a staff member complained. Ultimately, she was ordered to take it down because it was offensive to BLM. There was no media called, there was no public discussion at Board of Ed meetings, and there was no public acknowledgement of the individuals that were affected and quite frankly upset over this. I have a picture of it for anyone that wonders. Now, I'm not comparing the two things to each other, but I ask this question: How do we have discussions about these posters, supporting a movement that is supporting crime currently, but we don't support those who stop it? Organizations within the district, such as Borough Cares, which is represented here tonight, has done work previously on the topic of police brutality, which was the focus of the BLM poster. However, in my role as a police officer, many members that were on there have spoken to me about their disappointment in the group's conversations, specifically that their disinterest in hearing any opinions that vary from their own. I know both minority and non-minority employees of this district that have left the group because they were made to feel that their experiences and opinions are insignificant. If we want to create lasting change in our community, we need to have the uncomfortable conversations that include all of the stakeholders. In closing, I urge the district to ensure that we bridge the gap between what is happening in our schools and our local police department. Start initiatives which bring officers into the schools to interact with the kids, similar to what happens right here at ARIS. Like 20 more seconds.
If you could just, thank you.
Times have changed, and now more than ever, we need our kids to interact with the police, be willing to confide in the police, and most importantly, to trust the police. We should not be taking an approach that creates a divide. There's enough of that going on in the world. Thank you to the Board of Ed, Mr. Oliver, and whomever else was an intricate part of bringing these concerns to the forefront. While much of it may be silent in fear of retribution, you have more support than you know. Thank you for your time, and I look forward to being part of the meaningful conversations that may come from this, but please come with an open mind.
Thank you, Mr. Geraldi.
Good afternoon, Board. Uh, good evening, Board. My name is Jonathan Alvenes, and I am 11-years-old, attending ARIS, and I live on 120 Taylor Avenue, Hillsborough, New Jersey. I am writing this letter because I think wearing a mask in school should be optional. This probably seems crazy to you, especially after what a pandemic we had two years ago. I'm fed up with masks. I feel if parents want to mask their children, that's fine, but as we are trailing into winter, rooms upon rooms are turning the heat on. It's truly hard to breathe, and many of my pupils and I feel very overpowered. ARIS is tired, and not just ARIS, other schools too. I am taking a stand to speak my opinion to get the word out. My fellow classmate Xavier Walker has to be yelled at every day by the teacher because his mask slips down. The teachers think he does it on purpose, but he doesn't. All the teachers are talking about how kids should be able to voice their opinions, but as you say that, you don't give us the freedoms that an average American citizen should have. I think that teachers hate him too. Stop controlling us, give us our freedoms. Thank you for your time. This shall not be taken lightly and should be handled with thought, care, and, um, consideration. Sincerely, Jonathan Alvenes. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much for sharing your opinion.
Good evening, Board. Jason Alvenes, 120 Taylor Avenue. I'm standing here before you tonight as a parent, taxpayer, and a voice for the people. There are many people that are not willing to stand here and talk due to a company policy or because they own a business, so I'll speak for them. Last meeting, Mr. Trabowski stated he was upset a poster was taken down in the middle school. The poster in question is about police brutality and is the very core of what's wrong with this country. We are pushing divide and racism through the children. They deserve better than this. I am concerned for the children of this district and the administration, administration for acting this way. I'm not saying either party is right. I am saying there needs to be two different points made and let the children decide, but that's not the case here. Verbatim from Mr. Trabowski, "This display included an element with a point of view around the very real issues of policing practices, social justice, and equality-- social justice, and equality in America. And that image was censored today and removed over my objections. I'd like to know what those are since Mr. Trabowski has his finger on the pulse of law enforcement community and how they conduct themselves." I do not know Mr. Trabowski's background. I do not know if he has served in the military, but I do know he was not in law enforcement. I do question his point of view since he has never had a gun pointed at him and had to make a split-second decision if he were going home to his family or there was a knock on the door letting his wife and kids know that he wasn't coming home. There's a double standard here that needs to be addressed. Either both sides get input or it all gets taken down. Ms. Intune is the superintendent of the district. It would make perfect sense to me if you were to walk through the school and see if there's compliance with these issues. While I still have a few moments, I would like to address teachers and administrators using social media to defame parents based on their views. First of all, that's bad for the district. Second, even worse, if you are conducting yourself that way during the school day. Third, you have a right to an opinion not to degrade or dismiss parents based on opposing views as stated in Policy 3282, use of social networking sites. Number two, must uphold the district's value of respect for the individual and avoid making definitive statements about the school district, employees, students, and their families. Number six, shall not use social networking sites which would be detrimental to the mission and function of the district. Number eight, shall not post updates to their status on any social networking sites during instructional hours, including posting statements or comments on the social networking sites of others during school times unless it involves a school project. Employees must ensure that they have approval from the superintendent of schools or his or her immediate supervisor for use of such. I can provide screenshots of the complete disrespect of parents carried out by at least one teacher and one of the administrators during the last three months. Please let me know that this is necessary, but I'm sure you're aware and are handling this situation. Thank you very much.
Thank you for your comment, Mr. Alvenes.
Good evening. My name is Lawrence Spencer. I live at 1809 William and Mary Common. I'm an instructional assistant in this district. I'm speaking tonight as a staff member, a resident, a husband, and a father. We live in a society in which we are all bombarded with the topic of racism. It dominates the news, social media, and now our schools. Our kids are being drowned by the 24-hour news cycle in the swamp, which is social media. Information is flowing at exponential rate, and the kids can barely slow it down, much less turn it off completely. My plea is that we give our kids a break. They should be focusing on reading, writing, math, science, world languages, history, and trades. If they can't handle fighting racism, our kids are having a hard enough time getting reacclimated to school. Many are struggling to perform, and the amount of mental health challenges is staggering. Our teachers are being offered trainings like Me and White Supremacy, understanding unconscious bias while studying books such as White Fragility. Race is a constant focus and is not the character of people. Racism is about a person's heart and not their skin color. A person is racist because of their belief system, not their skin color. We must stop reducing everything to race. It's counterproductive and it continues to divide. We can't have our kids exposed to images and messages that we are not prepared to address responsibly. We see the display at HMS as harmless, and that may be true on the surface. However, we can't begin to understand what each of the 1,200 kids truly believe about it. All it takes is one kid to take it in a negative way, and we have a tremendous problem. If we are allowing the information to be seen, then we are responsible for every interpretation and reaction, and there is 0% chance that we are thoroughly reaching each of the 1,200 kids. Instead, we should focus on each student as a contributor to the greater good of our school culture. A higher self-worth must be the message. The profanity in our halls and classrooms has to stop. The basic respect for authority needs to be addressed. The dress code should be revisited to reflect higher standards and morals. How can we expect our kids to respond to racism effectively if they don't have the fundamental tools to respect themselves and the others around them? We, the adults, have the challenge to cultivate such an environment. As adults, we must model the behavior, raise a level of expectation, and develop a high standard of accountability for all parents, students, and staff. This is why the parents must be the primary source of navigating this topic of racism. The school should be a supplemental resource. I will teach my son about it and how to handle similar topics. I've been called names such as the N-word, sellout, and Oreo because I'm black but I act white. And I don't even know what that means. But thankfully, by the grace of God, my parents have guided me to forgive, love, and pray for all who may offend me because these people know not what they do. I believe Hillsborough is a good place filled with fantastic people. This is proven because I went through all the schools and I graduated from here. I've taught and I've coached at several of these schools, and my son will potentially go and attend these schools. I pray that my words tonight will lead to more meaningful conversations, and everybody here sees that I represent all people here as a child of God. God bless. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Spencer. Should we pause public comment for just one moment?
Yes, Mr. Geraldi. I see that we're just past 30 minutes.
Oh.
So in consideration of the fact that we have many people waiting to speak, and we only had one speaker in the first 30-minute period, I'd ask your indulgence that we extend the comments section for additional 30 minutes.
So if I would take a motion in a second and to extend the public... Thank you, Mr. Gillette, and thank you, Mr. Oliver. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, so we will now extend the... Thank you, Mr. Gillette. We will now extend public comment for another 30 minutes.
Good evening. Thank you for that extension. Anna Mailer, 11 Hunt Club Road, resident and student assistance counselor at the Hillsborough Middle School. I'm here to talk about safety. First, I want to thank you for your ongoing commitment to the physical safety of everyone in our buildings throughout the pandemic. As a counselor, my focus is the emotional safety of all students. Every child has the right to be physically safe and have a sense of belonging and connection to their school. Thank you for committing to this by adopting the district goal in September to continue to promote multicultural awareness, gender sensitivity, and appreciation of the diversity in the community. Thank you for expanding our turnkey program to meet this goal and supporting my courses on racism, trauma, anxiety, and the LBGTQ Safe Zone Training. My courses offer participants an opportunity to reflect on their own identities and experiences, a process described as the archaeology of the self, doing deep work of exploring our personal histories and thinking about how issues of race, class, religion, and gender identity live within. These courses serve to create a brave space for self-reflection, knowing your own story so you can be open to the stories of others. As a counselor, I am entrusted with many stories shared by students who struggle to navigate their place in this chaotic world amid discrimination and divisiveness. These students and their families live daily with another type of pandemic, one that is rooted in racism, homophobia, transphobia, and other forms of bias. We don't have to look to the media to see it. You are all painfully aware that the HIB cases in our schools almost always stem from beliefs that some people are better than others. I want to conclude my remarks on behalf of students and colleagues who have also shared their stories with me. Despite positive strides we've made, we have staff members who do not feel our district ethically supports them to be their authentic selves. They have a valid fear of harassment, feel isolated and invisible. Gender-based marriage equality has been legal since 2015, yet we have staff who identify as LBGTQ+ who do not feel they can display family photos or mention their same-gender partner. They worry that parents will not want their children to have them as a teacher. They worry about losing their jobs, and they really worry about our LBGTQ+ students. So if adults feel this way, how can our students feel safe and affirmed? It is no coincidence that these students are at a much higher risk of suicide, yet one of the simplest, easiest, no-cost suicide prevention strategies is acceptance in the community. When it comes to safety, I call upon you, as those who hold the power, to dedicate the same level of commitment and resources to both physical and emotional well-being of everyone in our school community. District goals cannot just be words on the website. You set the tone for the climate of our district with action, not silence. I urge you to bring diverse voices to the table to dialogue and inform policy decisions, provide more funding for an inclusive curriculum and professional development, embrace the reality that when there is true equity for all, everyone benefits. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Mailer.
Good evening. My name is Teresa Mastrata, and I have been working in Hillsborough as an educator for nine years. I'm a second-grade teacher, a turnkey trainer, and a Borough Cares member. One of the courses that I teach is called Me and White Supremacy, Part 1, White Privilege. This year in my second-grade class, we learned about perspective. Perspective may be a big word and an even bigger idea, but my second graders have come to understand it. They know that perspective is the way that you see something and that depending on the information you have access to, your perspective can change. Recently, comments were made at a board meeting about turnkey courses that were perceived as uncomfortable or controversial topics. This is one person's perspective. I would like to offer you another to consider. Think about what white privilege means to you right now. Everyone is on a different level of awareness of their privileges and the role their skin color plays in their everyday lives. If you are white, it is possible that you have not had to think much about your skin color. Now I want you to try to imagine that you are someone who is not white. Imagine that from the time you were a child, you had to work to find books, media, or other content that showcased someone who looked like you. Imagine that your textbooks or other school-issued materials misrepresented people with your skin color or diminished their contributions in favor of the white people who held power. Imagine being taught by your parents that you need to be extra careful of your actions in public places in order to maintain your physical safety. For many white people, these are not experiences that we have struggled with, yet they are the reality of the everyday lives for many of our community members. The purpose of my turnkey class is not for teachers to learn what white privilege is and then bring this content to their own classrooms. The purpose of my class is for educators to begin recognizing how white privilege has impacted their own life experiences. It serves as a lens for them to view their own thoughts and behaviors through. It helps teachers understand the perspectives of marginalized groups of people. The purpose of this course is to make educators more aware of the impact they have on people of color. This course addresses standards set by the strong evaluation model that the district uses. These standards include promoting cultural sensitivity and respecting students' diversity, specifically language, culture, race, gender, and special needs. As our community grows in diversity, it is crucial that white educators begin to examine how their actions affect their non-white students. There is no quick fix for this. It is not an easy practice. It takes dedication, persistence, time, and bravery. However, the more courageous we are in delving into difficult topics, the more our most vulnerable and marginalized students will benefit. From my perspective, a teacher who engages in this type of professional development is exactly the teacher I would want for my children. Thank you.
Good evening, Dr. Intunes and the Hillsborough Board of Education. My name is Donetta Johnson. I live at 1 Kaler Street. I speak to you as a parent and as a business owner and as a resident of greater than 35 years. First of all, go Raiders! Congrats to the new sectional champions. We are all in this together. We are not just the products of our environment, but indeed, we are the creators of our environment. I'd like to express my sincere appreciation to the Board of Education for your leadership and your courage in stepping out of comfort into discomfort. The Board of Education green-lighted a variety of trainings for our excellent and hard-working teachers to ensure that they have the tools to create a mentally healthy environment for our students, including environments that address the challenges of our most vulnerable students. By stepping away from what makes us comfortable into areas that make us uncomfortable and into the messiness of our ongoing struggles, we create and encourage conversation, debate, and ultimately, solutions for an inclusive, healthy, and stimulating environment, an environment that we want to model in school and also model as we exit the school system into our lives. This is exactly what our children deserve and what we owe them. Our children need safe spaces to examine our past and to understand the mistakes that were made and critically examine our here and now and how we participate and behave as we move forward, as we must move forward, not backwards, into our shared future. I hope that we are secure enough to allow our students to express how they are processing the world around them artistically as grown-ups and not draw false parallels to not being supportive of our hard-working police. Black Lives Matter, the counterpoint to that is not that police are good. The counterpoint, there is no counterpoint to Black Lives Matter. The existence of a people is something that we should all be working toward. As an African-American mother of two black sons, I am grateful to the students that stood up with their artwork that expressed support for black lives. And I am grateful for those who understand that the struggle and work for equity and fairness with policing is not anti-police. Let me repeat, it is not anti-police. It is pro-American, it is pro-future, and indeed, it is pro-police. Thank you for the opportunity to speak here.
Hello, my name is Samantha Vishel. I live at 6 Peterson Road, and I'm a junior on the Hillsborough High School dance team. During my freshman year, I made the varsity team, and it was that experience that solidified my desire to dance at the collegiate level. As you have heard or will hear tonight, the precautions being taken at dance competitions meet or exceed the current HHS guidelines. The need to perform this season goes far beyond trophies or accolades. When our dance team earns a bid to regional or national dance competitions, it is here and only here that we are exposed to college recruits. Without this exposure and experience to list on our resumes, dancing at the college level becomes unattainable. Colleges are now holding live dance tryouts, and our team has not competed live since February of 2020. Unlike other teams at the high school, our season runs seven months out of the year. We have put in countless hours, adapted to many challenges, and continue to put in the hard work even though the certainty of our season remains unanswered. The mission statement of our district states that all students will be led into a successful future. It has been so incredible watching my peers in the marching band capture a state championship this fall and experiencing the thrill of a football championship this past weekend. I just ask that you afford our dance team the same opportunity in representing with pride the Hillsborough Township School District. Thank you for your time.
Hello, my name is Christine Tippel, and I live at 235 Hockenberry Road. I am the proud parent of three children, two Hillsborough High graduates, and one high school sophomore. My sophomore has danced since she was three years old, and she loves it. This year, she decided to take her love of dancing and participate in a sport that would give her an opportunity to be part of the high school team. She joined the varsity dance team. Since this summer, this team has practiced together for more hours than I could possibly add up in order to choreograph and practice three different routines that they wish to compete at several regional and one national competition. The regional competitions are not overnights. Their competitions begin in January, so basically, their season has not begun. If you know anything about dance teams, the competitions are like the games. If they were to practice since August and not attend a competition this year, it would be like the football team only running drills and never once playing a game against another team. Unfortunately, the dance team is still waiting for approval for their competitions despite having submitted all the correct forms and requests in a timely manner. Delaying approval for these competitions and continuing to not make a decision at all could jeopardize their entire season and result in missing the deadlines for these registrations. If gymnastics was allowed to have their meet, cheer was allowed to attend their competitions, the play was allowed to go on, and every sport and academic team at this school was allowed to compete, both indoors and outdoors, why has the approval not been given to the dance team? We are the only team out of 26 in the state of New Jersey that has not been given approval to compete by their district. Even Montgomery's Dance Team, who receives medical advice from our district physician, Dr. Mandelbaum, has been given the approval by their district. These girls and their coaches have worked hard creating a team to be proud of that represents Hillsborough High School. These girls are athletes that deserve the same These girls are athletes that deserve the same respect as every other sport team and club at this school. Please give them the approval they need so they can compete and have a normal season like every other team. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Kristen Commune, and I live at 800 Robin Road. I'm a proud Hillsborough special education teacher, resident, and dance team coach. I have had the honor to coach the dance team for the last four years. It is not a secret that the last year and a half has been super difficult. I have seen firsthand the struggles my dancers have experienced emotionally and mentally. My job as a coach is to help the girls become better dancers, but more importantly, help them remain strong, confident, young women. The dance team engages about 30 students and their families annually, who otherwise would not be engaged at the high school. The HHS dance team has become a part of a tight-knit dance team community in New Jersey, won various regional awards, and is a nationally-ranked team. Our program has given students opportunities that they would not have been able to have without a team: summer camps, college combines, college clinics, master classes, regional dance competitions, national dance competitions, community events, opportunities to work with award-winning choreographers, the organization of fundraising events, to teach younger dancers in the Hillsborough community, and to dance at some sporting events. Reflecting on the current season thus far, the girls are desperate for some normalcy and to be able to compete. Virtual competitions were a good compromise last season, but we're in a very different place now, and virtual competitions are no longer an option. When our team attends competitions, we are never in direct contact with another team and always remain six feet or more away from all others. Our team remains in our team bubble. Dance organizations and schools hosting competitions have worked very hard to follow all CDC and school protocols. Some protocols that are taking place are single-team dressing rooms, masks worn by all athletes and spectators, modified award ceremonies, all masks worn when traveling, and the continuation of following all school and state guidelines. As you can see, these events are run similar to the many athletic events Hillsborough has organized safely this year. Our dancers deserve the opportunity to showcase their hard work that they have invested in our program since August. They have watched other HHS programs compete and flourish. I hope that with the collaboration of myself, the administration, the dancers, and their families, we can support the HHS dance team to perform safely and complete an in-person 21-22 competition dance season. Thank you.
Before we get to the next speaker, before we get to the next speaker, I just wanted to make a, I typically don't, I would wait till the end of public comment, but however, there was, with respect to the dance team, the approvals have been, they've been approved for in-state competitions. The only, no overnight competitions have been approved. So that is my understanding, and that may take some time to trickle down to the advisor, but that was my understanding. So I just wanted to let the students know that, and you're welcome to continue to speak. This is not, excuse me, I'm sorry, it's not a back-and-forth of this, I just wanted to clarify that that is, that is my understanding. Perhaps we could follow up offline? Thank you. But please, if the students would like to continue, you may.
Good evening. My name is Caleb Baker. I live at 1 Huey Lane. My name is Caleb Baker. I'm a senior and the current captain of the Hillsborough High School Dance Team. I've come to speak on the behalf of our upcoming dance team season. As a team, we have had the opportunities to perform during halftime at the varsity boys soccer games, along with performing at one high school football game. The team and I are forever grateful for the opportunity to showcase our talents at school functions. We were longing for more opportunities. Ways this can be done is allowing the team to perform at the winter sporting events, attending our regional competitions, and allowing us to attend our national competition in Orlando, Florida. Throughout the season, the team works for an extensive amount of time to perfect our routines that we take to competitions. Both the regional and national competitions present great opportunities for the team. This gives the team a chance to represent Hillsborough both at the regional and national level. Competitions present an opportunity for dancers to be noticed by numerous dance programs throughout the country. Due to the success of the team, I am currently talking and being recruited by multiple dance team college programs. Us being unable to perform sets us back, especially those in the college application process, or those who are, will be beginning that process soon. Our competitors are getting stronger while we are losing opportunities. Other programs such as wrestling and basketball are running and getting these opportunities to help them succeed. They are unmasked and in much closer contact with other towns and each other, but within our competitions, we stay with our team only and even are spaced out from other competitors. Every competition we go to, we go to, will require COVID-19 mandates. But regardless of the mandate of each competition, we will still be wearing our masks until the moment we perform. I believe we have worked hard and have earned the right to perform at all of our upcoming competitions this season. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Lexi LaPresti. I live at 110 Flanders Drive, and I'm a junior. I'm a third-year varsity member and captain of the Hillsborough High School Dance Team. My coaches, the parents, and the dancers have worked and sacrificed so much for this team. We are a fully parent-funded sport. The pandemic has affected all of us in different ways, but I am confident in saying that for myself and my teammates, being able to continue to dance and create together has been very beneficial to our mental health. I'd like to respectfully request that my team and I have a normal in-person competition season. Dance is not a close-contact sport, and we have and will continue to follow all rules set forth by the Department of Health. Also, if we do not attend in-person competitions, it is putting us at a disadvantage for college recruitment. Local and national competitions are watched heavily by college recruitment coaches, and often invitations to audition are gained from having been seen at these local competitions. I've watched my sister and my friends have full seasons in their respective sports, and I am hoping that we will be able to have the same. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Addison Yesalonis, and I'm a sophomore on the Hillsborough High School Dance Team. I'm here as a student, athlete, child of a pandemic, and a member of the Hillsborough High School Dance Team. These past two years have come with so many changes, insecurities, challenges, and fears. We woke up one day and suddenly we lived in a scary new place. Although so many of us students look fine on the outside, there are so many anxieties and worries inside of us. Coming back to school this year was a bright piece of hope. We wondered, was our lives starting to go back to normal? Friday night football games, in-person dance practices? Our hope was renewed that we would finally have a regular, true dance season. We have been working tirelessly on our routines, and our parents and coaches have given us so much. Although I was a freshman on the team last year, we were in a much different place and competed and performed virtually in our masks. As a dancer or performer in general, you thrive off the crowd. Nothing means more than making your audience feel something and to perform with your team. We started our season in August and have been training hard every week to perform on the regional and national stage. We are asking you to give us the opportunity to reach our goals and approve us to compete regionally and nationally. This is extremely beneficial and crucial for us in the aspect of college experience and recruitment that goes on at these competitions. Being at a disadvantage to other dancers of those who have competed in person for two whole years is intimidating, scary, and just simply unfair, since we should have no problem doing so as well based on the circumstances of other programs within our district competing. With everything being said, I hope you consider our needs as athletes and students and making them a priority. Thank you.
Hello, everyone. My name is Mia Roykers of 19 Newell Street, and I'm a junior at Hillsborough High School. Today, I'm speaking on behalf of the Hillsborough High School Dance Team. To start, I wanted to inform you all about the dance team experience as a dancer on the team for the past two years in addition to this year. My freshman year was normal, and all in person luckily, and that year was full of hard work, dedication, growth, and amazing opportunities to both meet new people and experience a whole different type of dance as opposed to studio dancing. Going to competitions is such an important part of a dance team because it gives us the drive to work to be the best. In our previous years, we've done extremely well in these competitions, and we are nationally-ranked. On the other hand, last year, we were initially entirely remote, then very limited regarding practices, competitions, and other activities that we would normally take part in in person. This season was extremely difficult for us, but due to the circumstances, we still managed to have our full season by doing virtual competitions and practices. The difference between experiencing competitions in person and being up against other teams live, along with in-person practices, is much different than filming videos of our dances and sending them in or having to use Zoom or Google Meet to practice. The connection between dancers and coaches and the necessity of in-person practices and competitions are all detrimental to the dance team experience. I'm here asking as a member of the Hillsborough Dance Team, along with the rest of the team and our families, for the Commodities to continue to excel as we have in the past. It's essential that we are able to go back to normal like other high school activities and sports have been able to this year. Our coaches and parents have put in so much time, effort, resources, and passion into this team, and us dancers have put in the same, along with working hard for, so hard for so long, to strongly and confidently represent our school and Hillsborough as a whole. And it is so important to do this at these regional and national competitions as well. Thank you so much for your time and consideration.
Hi, my name is Jessica Graham, and I live at 50 Wesley Road, and I'm a freshman on the dance team. I've been waiting years to finally be able to represent Hillsborough with an H across my chest. Going into freshman year is a nerve-wracking experience, but when I got to meet my team over the summer, it helped me prepare and be more confident for the upcoming year. Dance team has opened up so many opportunities for me already and allowed me to start to build lifelong friendships with my teammates. I've been able to learn more about what it means to be a good leader, to be responsible, to be accountable for my actions, and the importance of time management throughout these past couple of months. I've learned if you want something bad enough, you should never give up. When we got to dance at a few soccer games this year, I finally felt the impact that dance can have on not only me, but other people. From that moment on, my team and I have felt the drive and continue to push to perfect our competition routines and represent Hillsborough this competition season. My team's hope is that with the collaboration of the administration, coaches, and our parents, we can come up with a way that the dance team can compete safely at all regional and national competitions during the 2021-2022 season. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Emily Anna, and today I'm here to talk about the dance team and everything it stands for. As someone new to the team, I'm not familiar to how regular practices/activities used to be before the pandemic. But what I do know is that these four coaches are doing everything that they can to make everything seem like it would be before the pandemic. The dance team is quite literally my entire life right now, ever since I quit studio competition. Not only has this team brought me nurturing friendships, but has also helped my mentality and my confidence surrounding dance altogether. Not only are the coaches' goal to make us better dancers, but has also to support this school as well. If not provide competitions and nationals, how can we do this? Our program is being limited by these restrictions, and we understand that everything is messed up because of the pandemic. Our dance program is helping us with our futures, and many of these alumnis in this room go to colleges with number one in the country dance teams. We hope we can all work together to give this season dance competitions and nationals where we can show off our high school. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Trish Yesalonis, 813 Teneg Court. My daughter Addison is a sophomore on the Hillsborough High School Dance Team. I'm here to inquire with the board about the status of the approval of the four regional and state competitions in January and February, as well as the national competition in Florida in February. As of today, we received approval for the one January 9th regional, but no other approvals have been granted at this time. Our girls have been practicing tirelessly for these competitions since August. These are the only competitions they will have this year. Other sports have home and away games approved through February, sports such as basketball and wrestling, where there is very close physical contact. With the dance competitions, the girls are kept in their team bubble and do not interact with other students at other schools. When they perform their routines, they are the only ones on the floor and will never be within six feet of another team. Additionally, the competitions follow all school and New Jersey CDC guidelines. All New Jersey high school dance teams, including Montgomery, have been approved to compete, so why haven't we? The latest update from the New Jersey CDC on November 16th of 21 states, "Practices and competitions for indoor and outdoor organized sports, including indoor and outdoor interstate youth sports, may resume in accordance with health and safety protocols. There are no limits for indoor or outdoor practices and competitions." These dancers and us parents have made so many sacrifices for this dance team in order to be a part of these in-person competitions. There is a social and emotional aspect to this that cannot be overlooked or taken for granted. The mental health of our children depend on these opportunities to play sports and to perform. There is a range of physical, emotional, and interpersonal benefits that arise from these experiences. Dance is not just a sport or an activity for this team. These girls are artists and performers who pour their heart and soul into growing their skills, perfecting their routines, and actually being able to perform in person. Additionally, there's an impact for these girls' college careers as well. Part of the college recruitment asks for them to identify their high school performances. Colleges are now having in-person tryouts, and our dancers have not performed live and in-person since February of 2020. This puts our students at a huge disadvantage in the college application process. The college recruitments occur at the competitions that we are seeking approval for. There is inconsistency with school policies and other programs and that of the dance team. Why are our dancers denied the same opportunities as their peers? How do we explain the discrimination against our dancers when other events that have no physical distancing are approved? This is unfair and inequitable. They are much closer together with other students just walking the hallways during their school day than they will be at these competitions. These girls have lost so much over the last year and a half. This is more than just a performance opportunity for these girls. This is their connection to this high school, to their peers, to their teammates, and to their craft. I ask you to please allow us to have a normal competition season, including all regionals and nationals. Thank you.
Before we continue, may I indulge the board with another, we finished our 30 minutes. We'll do a 20-minute with just the people who are standing here, so if I could have a first and a second? Thank you, all in favor? Please, go ahead.
Good evening. Cindy Estini, Ski Drive. Thank you for listening to everyone here who's come tonight. I wanted to thank the board for your tireless public service, really and deeply, because being away from your families and listening with such attention for so long is definitely a feat. I also want to thank the board and the administration for supporting evidence-based decision-making. It's often unpopular, and I think extremely important, so thank you for that. Included in that evidence-based decision-making, from my perspective, is the professional learning that encourages inclusivity in our district. At the beginning of my career, nearly two decades ago, I had the benefit of such professional learning myself, and the evidence shows that it saves lives. So I appreciate you supporting that type of programming, and if any questions exist about it, I encourage you to reach out to folks in the district who are passionate about this, because we care about our students. And I think that the thing we can all agree on is that we are here for the students and keeping them safe. Thank you again for your service.
Hi, my name is Sanja Nabata, 39 Tippet Street, Hillsborough, New Jersey, and I'm a ninth grader currently attending HHS. If you don't remember me, this past spring, I spoke at a Board of Ed meeting with two of my classmates, and we talked about the importance of educating kids on microaggressions. Additionally, last year, I participated in HMS Cares and the Hallway of Racial Healing, which is one of the main reasons I'm here. If you don't already know, the poster that has sparked recent controversy was actually put up in the Hallway of Racial Healing. I understand that during this speech, I may be reiterating some points already said before, but it's important for me and the rest of HMS Cares that I share my perspective of the situation. I'm a person of color, and I'm very, very proud of it. When my classmates and I were making the posters and artwork for the Hallway of Racial Healing last year, my heart swelled with pride for the beautiful work we were doing. We were spreading awareness about racism and Black Lives Matter. This project made me so hopeful for the future of this country and for the future of antiracism. The Hallway of Racial Healing meant more to all of us than just a hallway filled with antiracist or controversial posters. It was a symbol for the work we were putting into making this world more equitable for everyone. Trust me, politics and critical race theory weren't in mind last school year, especially last school year. Everything was virtual, and I can tell you, I personally was probably thinking about the new Ariana Grande album that was just released. To think that we ever had anything hateful towards the police that risked their lives to protect us every day is an overstatement. I was never forced to join HMS Cares or have a viewpoint of an equal future for everyone. I chose to have these beliefs, just how I chose to participate in HMS Cares, just like how I chose to make the posters for the Hallway of Racial Healing and spread awareness. When that poster made by two of my classmates was taken down- When that poster made by two of my classmates was taken down, my heart perpetually sank. I couldn't believe that in my own community, artwork towards an anti-racist community had been torn down and destroyed. Why? That's the question I've been asking myself for the past week. Why was such an impactful poster made by young student voices taken down? I personally couldn't come up with an answer, because that poster meant so much more to me than the piece of paper that my peers made for a club. It meant that we were acknowledging all the pain of Black people in the past and therefore taking a step towards equity. Specifically, Black Lives Matter is a movement combating especially police brutality towards Black people. I just want to repeat that this movement is not anti-police, but it's instead recognizing all the lives that have been lost and working to educate people and make a move to stop this from happening again. We will continue doing anti-racist work as before and are even more motivated to make this community a better place for everyone, no matter their physical or emotional appearance. To address another issue, there's also been retrogressing discussions surrounding the turnkey workshops that spread awareness about the LGBTQ plus community in school. To give context, these workshops help teachers understand how to help students in the LGBTQ plus community. For example, in these workshops, teachers might learn how to help an LGBTQ plus student come out or how to help stop discrimination against LGBTQ plus students. Personally, I think the response for these workshops is awful, and I find it horrible that people are uncomfortable with letting other people express themselves. At the end of the day, we're all human and all deserve an equal opportunity at life. So I ask everyone to please consider the fact that there's no place for hate in this world. Some of the things I've said in this speech might not really resonate with some of you, but we have to consider other points of view in order to create change. Please take a listen to all the wonderful student voices out there that can help everyone have a broader vision and for the future of this world. Thank you so much, and I look forward to speaking in front of you again.
Thank you for your public comments.
Good evening. Mary Beth DeLisi, Nine Steps Drive, HMS literacy teacher and parent of a current high schooler. I want to thank the board for the turnkey training sessions being offered this year. In the past, I really found some of the courses to be repetitive, centered only on technology, and after taking course after course after course on Google Sheets, it was sometimes difficult to find courses to fulfill the six-hour requirement. But this year, the variety of offerings, they're just so much more relevant. These courses include tech training, self-care for teachers, and creating inclusive classrooms that respect all and honor historical truth. I appreciate this diversity of training offerings that give myself and other teachers the tools to learn more about topics such as race, sexuality, and gender, topics that directly impact the students in our classrooms. At the middle school, students in eighth grade literacy classes recently read a historical text called "The First Americans", and that was a letter written by the Grand Council Fire of American Indians to the mayor of Chicago in 1927. In the letter, the council president implored the mayor to teach history authentically with all of its glory as well as its ugly truths in the textbooks that they were selecting. Tonight, I am asking the board to ensure that we continue to do the same. Thank you and have a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you for your comments.
Hi, Amy Salinger, sixth grade math teacher at Aris and HTA Treasure. Can we do budget input now?
Oh, absolutely.
Thought this was the right part. As you know, you asked for budget input starting now and leading up until you create the budget. So I just wanted to mention that next year, my understanding is Aris will be eliminating ASI as we've eliminated advanced classes this year at the sixth grade level and moving more towards an RTI model. My understanding of that model so far involves interventionist specialists that will be either pushing in or pulling out groups of students who are struggling. So if we look back to, I think it was two years ago, where we eliminated positions, and we have less staff that we're working with. As we've moved towards creating a new model and a new way of doing intervention, I would like the board to consider staffing and how it's going to affect that new model, because I think for sixth grade right now, my numbers could be wrong. There would be three teachers serving the entire sixth grade for intervention, because there would be no more ASI classes. So just something to think about as we move forward, looking at appropriately staffing this new initiative. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Salinger.
Hello. Didier Jimenez, 348 Gemini Drive, Hillsborough, New Jersey. Is it good? Okay. So I ran recently into a quote by the daughter of Martin Luther King, and it felt like it hit close to home. And this is something that she said on her official social media. She said, "So many people haven't listened to or read my father's words beyond the end of 'I Have a Dream and It Shows.'" And I felt that, you know, what we're going through as a town, it really, you know, made me think about things. And just even about the history, that Martin Luther King was hated when he was alive. You should see their newspaper political cartoons about him, how they portray him. It's awful stuff. And, you know, we can't ignore the reality that we have a system that historically has been hurting African-Americans the most. From Jim Crow laws that were studied by Nazi Germany to learn how to, they could do their own discrimination, to the war on drugs that put more African-Americans in jail, to other social issues that also involves police, because we have a path to incarceration. We have a path that leads to for-profit prisons. We have a system that is not working out for a lot of people, and most of them are African-Americans. And in 2020, the Hillsborough community came out in support of Black Lives Matter, and I am so proud of them, because they understand that we're there to bring awareness to those issues, to those people who barely have a voice but a social media handle to bring out information about somebody who suffer, just like George Floyd did. And, you know, our group that organized it, we work with the local PD to make sure that everybody's safe. Everybody's concern was to make sure that the Hillsborough community is safe, make sure they had hay sanitizer, water, make sure everybody stayed off the roads, make sure we communicated accordingly with the local police department, because we had the same goals, to make sure we bring that awareness that being Black Lives Matter does not mean being anti-police, because we can't do those events without them, and we really appreciate every time we collaborate to make sure safety is number one in our community. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Jimenez.
Hello. Priscilla Sunu here, 2206 Jameson Common. I'm here to voice my opinion or my thoughts on the removal of the poster from the middle school and the subsequent comments made by members of this board specifically linking the actions to critical race theory. I'm not really here to debate any issues, as I don't believe this is the forum to have that. I'm speaking as an HES, HMS, and HSS, HSS, sorry, HHS alumni who has experienced overt racism in the Hillsborough School district as early as the fifth grade. And I believe that it is all of our goal in this room to provide an enriching and balanced experience for their students, and I just hope that the board continues to consider the experiences of students of color in Hillsborough, as it is a very polarizing place to be as a student of color. And I've been very proud to watch the progress made, especially in the last two years, of forums, discussions, avenues of discussion that I didn't have as a student, and I was not that old. So really great to see the improvements thus far, but hoping that those improvements are protected as students who are of color don't get to go home and take off their skin color, and they're constantly reminded of that. So I believe it's their intention for the students to create a dialogue around what matters to them, and that's exactly what they have succeeded in doing. And I hope, and you take into consideration what I and many others today have said, as more importantly, the students' experiences are very real and deserve attention. And most importantly, continuing for students to have a safe space to express themselves in Hillsborough. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there any other public comment before we close the public comment portion? If anybody else would like to speak, if you could line up so that we could put your name on the sheet. Thank you.
Good evening. My name is Rodney Williams. I'm from 101 Everett Close. I've lived in Hillsborough since 1991, when I moved to Majestic Knolls Development with my wife Renee. I'm an HR consultant for my own firm specializing in diversity, equity, and inclusion, and I also serve as an associate minister at Fountain Baptist Church in Summit, where I co-lead the Social Justice Committee that's been partnering with the Summit Police Force to develop a more transparent policing process by forging a better relationship between them and the communities of color. This evening, I stand to say that for more or less for 30 years, I've been quietly proud resident of this town. I've watched my daughter Kamari successfully navigate the local school system, from the Y through Hillsborough High School graduating in 2020. I participated in rec leagues, voted in the elections, and supported local businesses. Never been uncomfortable traveling about town, and during the last election cycle, the mayor and a few other local politicians even knocked on my door to ask my opinions and solicit my vote. I haven't been overly concerned about racial profiling by the police or about overt racism and discrimination here, even though I'm sure it exists here as much as anywhere else, especially based on some of the comments that have been called for here, calling Black Lives Matter a terrorist organization, for an organization that seeks the same respect for our lives as white lives. This nation has a long and sordid history of inhumane treatment of peoples of color, and in particular, Black people. Racism is American as apple pie, and it remains viable because of the same parents who stood by while lynching was a social event. Noted scholar Kimberle Crenshaw put it this way. Racism is like a bestow. At one time, it was put into every building, but now that we know its deadly effects, we look to remove it from every single one of them, even if it means tearing down the building and rebuilding. Please note that I said I was quietly proud and that I hadn't seen any overt signs of racism until now, because when I read the school board member John Oliver had the audacity to censor, or in his words, "question" a student's freedom of expression, artwork, and a school project, because he, as a white male, could impose his will on what constitutes acceptable representations of my community, I became outraged. This will not stand. I'll be quiet no more. We're starting a Black and other people with color parent group to ensure that the town and the schools know that we're here and we can be a resource for you, but if anything like this happens, we'll be your nightmare. Mr. Oliver, you need to remember that in your comments, you left out parents when you spoke of those whose interests you represent. You said, and I quote, "We need to go back and look at what we're doing and how we're portraying things, because your point as educators, as elected officials, as board members, as police officers, we need to look at both sides." End quote. You exhibited this very bias that you noted in seemingly requiring that the student's artwork needed to represent a perspective that she may not agree with. That's paternalistic white racism, and I'm guessing that you don't want to be seen in that light personally or professionally. So you're admonished that we will be actively watching. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. Is there any other public comment? Okay, seeing none, then I will now close public comments. And I will reiterate again that the board members abide by the Code of Ethics, and no individual board member has any authority to direct any staff member to act, and at no point did a board member give a directive to censor a display at the Hillsborough Middle School. I would also like to thank the students and the people who had spoken tonight. With decorum and civility, we appreciate that, which is a good example for our students who are watching. And then with that, I would like to turn it to the board. Ms. Fofana, if you'd like to begin.
I want to commend the other students here tonight for their advocacy and additionally, their dedication. I also want to acknowledge that I can't imagine how challenging this year must have been for administrators, parents, students, and our entire town. These unprecedented circumstances have made it beyond difficult for all of us to regain a sense of normalcy. But I do know and appreciate that it is the first priority of all educators in this district to keep us students safe. However, as we've begun to shift back to our regular activities, I know that myself and many other students here today feel as though certain privileges have not been extended to all activities that are part of HHS. From girls' softball to choir to academic teams and now dance team, the COVID restrictions clearly have been significantly more harsh in comparison to other predominantly male sports. I know that football culture plays a really important role in our school environment, but the comments made tonight further demonstrate that these activities are equally vital. As a member of the school dance team, we followed restrictions on COVID meticulously and cautiously for the past several months. I know that our safety is the first priority, and we'd never want to jeopardize that, but for many students looking to pursue dance or dance in college, the lack of in-person opportunities has detrimentally impacted our growth as dancers and also our development as people. I cannot be more grateful that we have a school that is so invested in our health and well-being, but the inconsistency in the COVID restrictions can at times be discouraging for many of the groups that have been working tirelessly to perform, compete, and showcase their abilities. I also want to bring up the situation that happened at the middle school. I know there was a concern regarding certain statements that posed the risk of biases and animosities among students, but upon hearing my peers speak, I do think, if possible, we should work toward reevaluating what we deem as detrimental. I know, as controversial, I know that myself and other students just want to feel like we're in an environment where we are supported for who we are. While I know this situation is not directly related to students censoring something that they not only created, but was intended to celebrate and acknowledge the contributions and struggles of a group of people is not much different than invalidating the existence of students who identify with that group. I know that there are certain parameters that we, as a school and as a town, have to follow when it comes to controversies. But I don't think that identity is something that is debatable. The sentiments shared by students tonight show exactly why we need more things like this display and why it is important that they aren't looked at as political matters, but instead crucial parts of our safety and learning environments. While navigating the pandemic, rising tensions, and academics, I do applaud our school community for taking action. But moving forward, I ask that as a community, we consider how sometimes immediate or restrictive solutions, although done with good intentions, have a direct impact on the livelihood of students in a way that something potentially controversial ever could. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fofana. Any comments from the board? Ms. Stats?
I think, I think what, one thing we all have in common is that we want what's best for our students. Obviously, we disagree on how that happens. I'm concerned that it appears to be that there's like two sides to the issue of regarding, I guess, the poster and related views. But I don't think there are just two sides. There are so many nuances regarding racism, diversity, equity. There's multiple viewpoints. And what concerns me is that when we create these two camps, and a lot of times, we end up resorting to labeling someone we disagree with with a really pejorative term. Like if either they're racist or they're indoctrinating our children, when, like I said, there's nuances. If someone's just asking a question, maybe we should just listen to their point of view and avoid judgment and avoid labeling. What I am happy about is that for years now... What I am happy about is that for years now, our curriculum addresses the issues of racism and diversity in a rich way, and I anticipate that it will even continue to expand doing that. I look at this issue of removing the poster, as misguided as it was, I do think that's just a blip. I don't think that represents what's going on in our school district. The Hall of Racial Healing and the displays related to the African-American experiences in history, that's part of providing a full education for all of our students, no matter what their color, that is an important part of a full curriculum. And what I'm also heartened by is, and I believe this has been said before, is how respectful everyone has been tonight, regardless of their own point of view. Everyone has spoken respectfully. But what I really admire, again, is the poise and eloquence of our students. I'm always impressed by that. I look forward to hopefully having presentations about examples of anti-racism or addressing racism and equity within our curriculum. And obviously, this is not the forum for any kind of dialogue, but I look forward to that opportunity in some format to have dialogue and two-way communication between people that come from different points of view, and hopefully, we will be, continue to listen and consider each other's point of view without resorting to labeling. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. Is there any other comment from the board? Mr. Oliver?
Well, I've been sitting here very quietly this evening, and I almost feel like this is like a Law &amp; Order episode, that we need to go back and recap some things that happened two weeks ago. So there were some individuals came to the podium a couple of weeks ago and talked about censorship. And I've heard the word censorship. I'd heard my audacity and the outrage of what I did. Let's go back. Let's go back to the previous episode so we can continue with tonight's episode. I made an inquiry to the administration based on several constituents who saw a poster in the middle school, and they asked what the content of that poster was. So as a board member, I questioned it. I asked the administration. And the answer I got about a week later was it was part of Black History Month. It was supposed to come down in June. It's coming down. And the next item that's going up is about Indigenous Americans. Now, in the past two weeks, I've been called a racist. I've been called a member of the KKK. I've had phone calls to my house, and I have been criticized. So if anyone in this audience thinks that they're going to silence me for making an inquiry for what is going to be in our students' best interests, as Ms. Stats just said, it's about our students. The speaker that got up talked about a poster that was very well done by the students. However, I was told the poster was made by a media specialist, not a student. And I commend the students for speaking here tonight and giving your point of view and making that poster, right? Because you believe in that, and that's what you're supposed to be doing, is believe in that. We need to look at counterpoints and points. The speaker said it was a poster relating to social justice and social injustice. So when I got the answer that said it was part of Black History Month, it's coming down, it was supposed to come down in June, it's coming down now, and there's going to be a new display comes up. It was an answer I got. I don't know why it was still up for so long, why it shouldn't have been maybe another topic. Like, I could think in history of, I remember as a young man reading FDR, right? Pearl Harbor was bombed. Mr. Gillette, you're a history buff, right? And we put Asian-Americans in internment camps. I don't think, what a horrific, because of the color of their skin, because of their nationality, they were put in internment camps. But we were afraid of what happened. But we've come a long way. But I feel like because I made an inquiry, I'm being singled out, and that's just unacceptable. I know a couple of people that spoke tonight, and again, wholeheartedly, I commend those students, and you need to continue to speak out about these things, right? Officer Geraldine, who is a tremendous asset to Hillsborough Township and the police force, spoke very eloquently tonight. And I apologize, the one gentleman who spoke this evening who went through our school district and is now a teacher here. Thank you. Thank you for coming up and speaking, right? Very eloquent. You made the point. Our kids have had enough of this. We need to be aware of it. We need to teach it to them, but they need to make their own determination. Is there something that's going to come up about a police officer running into Columbine or Marjory Stoneman School with a handgun going after kids with ARKs? The protection that they give us. I want to have the point and counterpoint, but it's not about the poster. The poster was very well done. It's not about censorship. It's about a board member speaking out for what somebody in town or a group of individuals in town are questioning. So you're doing the exact thing that you're criticizing me doing. You're criticizing me for just asking simple questions and answering and asking those very, very tough questions that we need to face every day. I hope we put this behind us. I hope this ends. There have been newspaper articles. I am not going to be silenced by any of these topics. I will continue to speak out for the taxpayers, the stakeholders, the students, the teachers, right or wrong. I want to hear both sides of the story. I want to move on. President Shrihilo, you brought up, dance was approved. There were some notes that I had, that dance is looking to attend four in-state competitions. Has that been approved?
Mr. Oliver, as far as I understand, the first of the dance competitions was approved. The nationals that the students are talking about in Disney World has not been because it falls under overnight travel, so that is not going to be approved at this time. And given that it is, I believe, I looked it up in early February, unlikely at this time.
Okay, so my notes tell me that there's four in-state competitions that do not require overnight. Are all four of those approved, or only one has been approved at this point?
As far as I understand, one has been approved at this time, and we can, I will follow up with Dr. Antunes when we speak and get back to you.
Okay, because I, you know, I just want to bring up a point. This is a growing concern that I have, and I think a lot of people have. We've sat through, and I'm happy to sit through these meetings, because I think we get paid overtime, Mr. Gillette, right? However, I'm seeing a pattern, right? You know, so we had choir, drama. We had academics, and girls from the dance team, thank you. Thank you for coming here tonight, coaches, parents. As a former parent of a dancer, I know how important it is. I know how hard you work. This pandemic has been mentally draining on everyone, but more importantly, our students. You know, these little niceties, these competitions, this is what it's all about. I think you said it very eloquently. You've been preparing since August. The competitions are where we're at. When I hear we're one of 26 districts in the Skylands Conference that isn't allowing this, I question that. I know there's major, major concerns for deadlines to get your applications in to attend these things. We had choir, we had drama. They had to sell tickets. We did get it approved, but my concern is that it's taking too long because of all the other administrative things that we have to do. So I'm asking, can we move forward with this? I know, Ms. Maroon, you're a dance coach yourself. I reached out to you about a week ago. You said your team is competing. Can we get this as a top priority on our education committee to sift this out, to give these girls the answer that they deserve, that they should be able to compete for in-state competitions, no overnights, and make it 26 of 26 districts in the Skylands Conference that can compete? I think it's very important that they could reserve their spots to maintain that protocol, that social distancing, that these venues could have the ability to space them out as they've been directed. So, you know, timing is somewhat imperative in this.
Yes, so in regards to that, I have been made aware of it and using my, I guess, past experience as a former dance team competition coach. I have been in talking to Dr. Antunes and will continue these talks. She'd informed me today, actually, that the one in-state has been approved, and we are in the talks of getting the rest. And again, with regards to overnight, yeah, my school is not doing the overnights as well.
Yeah, and I, you know, again, I'm not a scientist. I'm not a doctor. I understand that decision. What I have trouble understanding is if we approve one, why can't we approve all four? I mean, can we get this done?
So, Mr. Oliver? So I'd just like to remind the board and the public that these, as we, as I said during the, when the students had come for the academic teams, these are not board-level decisions. This is part of running the district, so it is an administrative decision. And as Dr. Antunes has repeatedly said, she will reevaluate the requests, you know, as the situation evolves. So she has approved the first competition. That is in early January. I do not, I'm not aware of the dates for the other trips, but as I said to you, Mr. Oliver, when Dr. Antunes and I meet later this week, we will discuss that. And it's really not anything that, it's really more as an update. Like, it is not a board-level decision.
Again, I just want to reiterate, these are time-sensitive issues that we've experienced. We've had numerous clubs eloquently come up to the podium and speak up. I see this as an ongoing pattern. I'd like to resolve this.
And I think we all want to resolve it. I think what's really difficult, right? And I'm going to speak for Dr. Antunes and the administration. They are doing a really great job in keeping our district safe. As I talk to other board members in other districts, they let me know that their sixth grade has closed down because of COVID cases. We have not had to do that, knock on wood, right? That we have not had to do this. It is not, oh, excuse me, excuse me. So the administration, the superintendent, is doing everything that they can to keep our district open, in school, full days, five days a week. And as she has said, she evaluates the data as it comes in. She is in constant consultation with Dr. Mandelbaum. I was briefed on her conversation late last week. And Dr. Mandelbaum has, he is a district's advisor, right? And so if another district does not ask for his feedback, as there was, then that is kind of out of his control, right? So Dr. Antunes does seek his advice, and from what I understand, that he does not advocate for overnight travel at this time, at least not through the... Excuse me. This is not a public back-and-forth. So, Mr. Oliver, I will update you with, as soon as we can.
I don't need to be updated. Dance team needs to be updated.
And as I said, this is an administrative decision.
The students need to be updated. They've suffered enough. They need some positive news.
Is there any other comment from the board? Ms. Stats and then Ms. Fafana.
I understand that safety and health is definitely the top priority here, but I guess there's an appearance of inconsistency and timely decision-making. So I support that along with the concern for safety and health. For this to be a concern for the dance team in particular, and again, maybe I guess I don't know the whole story, but it just seems to be not a consistent action.
Ms. Fafana?
Again, I'd just like to reiterate what was previously mentioned. I understand that's an administrative decision, and I appreciate all of the authoritative figures taking the time to consider our circumstances, but it's really concerning and almost discouraging to see, particularly male sports allotted a plethora of opportunities where, as specifically our school dance team, has not been acknowledged perpetually since it started at Hillsborough. And then additionally, not to dwell, or, and I don't mean this disrespectfully, but the whole idea of students being tired and not wanting to talk about the race in classroom. I, like, I am tired. I'm tired of watching people look like me on the news, being misconvicted or murdered, and then be in classroom settings where I'm not allowed to express that upset or even have my own existence being validated. And I do understand that politics and other controversial issues are meant to stay out of the classroom, but the display at the middle school was neither of those things. And I'm not placing the blame on any board members or administrators who expressed a concern, but it's more so that there was the inquiry about a counterpoint. I don't think there's any counterpoint to identity or existence or advocacy. And so that's just something for me as a student, and I know fellow students of color of well are increasingly concerned about. So thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Fafana. Ms. Nurse?
I'm going to circle back to the activities and athletics, because I am in agreement that, you know, there are things that are time-sensitive, and we continue to see a pattern of a new group of people reaching out through email or coming to a board meeting. And I'm just hoping or suggesting that maybe head administration can meet with the directors of all these groups, the athletic director, whoever is in charge of all of the clubs and other competitive activities, meet with head administration and see what has been approved, what has not been approved, what is still closed down, and maybe relooking at that to see if we can open anything up to save. You know, I loved hearing when students come to here, but in the end, if they don't show up, that means everything's going well and everybody's happy. So maybe we can just make this concise and inclusive of everybody all at one time if we can get those people together to debrief the head administrators.
Thank you, Ms. Nurse. Any other comment from the board? Okay, seeing none, then I will take a motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Thank you, Ms. Stats. All in favor? We are now adjourned. See you in two weeks. Happy Thanksgiving.